Testing, so the microphone is live? Okay. All right, we'll keep working on the camera, but at least the audio seems to be working at this point. I'd like to welcome everyone tonight to this informational meeting to explain the deposition of Mr. Chuck Dusama. There are note cards for questions and answers at the end. Those note cards are up here. So I think what we'll do at the end of the presentation, have a time for those to be distributed. And you're welcome to write down a question that we'll try to answer. The purpose of that question and answer is not necessarily to get into everything, but if there's any clarification or any further instruction that a question could bring out, we can have those questions. Let's begin tonight by singing psalto number fifty-one, psalto number fifty-one. We'll sing the three stanzas, all three of fifty-one. I guess we can sing a cappella tonight. Amen. Let's read Galatians two, Galatians two verses one through ten. "Then fourteen years after I went up again to Jerusalem with Barnabas and took Titus with me also; and I went up by revelation and communicated unto them that gospel which I preach among the Gentiles, but privately to them which were of reputation, lest by any means I should run or had run in vain. But neither Titus, who was with me, being a Greek, was compelled to be circumcised, and that because of false brethren, unawares, brought in, who came in privily to spy out our liberty which we have in Christ Jesus, that they might bring us into bondage; to whom we gave place by subjection, no, not for an hour, that the truth of the gospel might continue with you. But of these who seemed to be somewhat, whatsoever they were, it maketh no matter to me; God accepteth no man's person; for they who seemed to be somewhat in conference added nothing to me; but contrarywise, when they saw that the gospel of the uncircumcision was committed unto me, as the gospel of the circumcision was unto Peter; for he that wrought effectually in Peter to the apostleship of the circumcision, the same was mighty in me toward the Gentiles. And when James, Cephas, and John, who seemed to be pillars, perceived the grace that was given unto me, they gave to me and Barnabas the right hands of fellowship, that we should go unto the heathen and they unto the circumcision; only they would that we should remember the poor, the same which I also was forward to do." I'd also like to read article thirty-two of the Belgic Confession. Article thirty-two of the Belgic Confession. The title of this article is "The Order and Discipline of the Church." Article thirty-two. "In the meantime we believe, though it is useful and beneficial that those who are rulers of the church institute and establish certain ordinances among themselves for maintaining the body of the church, yet they ought studiously to take care that they do not depart from those things which Christ, our only Master, hath instituted; and therefore we reject all human inventions and all laws which man would introduce into the worship of God, thereby to bind and compel the conscience in any manner whatever. Therefore we admit only of that which tends to nourish and preserve concord and unity, and to keep all men in obedience to God. For this purpose excommunication or church discipline is requisite, with the several circumstances belonging to it according to the word of God." Let us call upon the name of our God in prayer. Our Father which art in heaven, we come unto Thee who art the holy and the true God, and who hast in Thy everlasting mercy and according to Thy eternal good purpose in Christ, sent Thy only begotten Son for our salvation; and who hast in Jesus Christ liberated us from the bondage of sin and death, who hath liberated us from the bondage of the devil and of man, who hath freed us from the will of man and the conscience of man, and hast given unto us the gospel of our salvation and made us free in Him. We thank Thee, Father, that in these days we may enjoy that freedom and that liberty which we have in Christ alone, and may enjoy the gospel which gives peace to our souls and the comfort of knowing that though we are corrupt and though we are guilty in ourselves, we are made righteous in Christ and have in Him all things. We pray that Thou will bless us in this evening as we meet to hear a presentation regarding weighty matters in our congregation and regarding the deposition of an elder from his office. Will Thou give unto us understanding? May Thy word be a light upon our pathway and may it illuminate our minds. And we pray, Father, that Thou will continue among us the gospel of Jesus Christ and continue to give us His liberty and may we stand fast in it. Will Thou hear our prayer, forgive our sins, for we confess before Thee that we are corrupt and that each of us in our own hearts knows ourself to be the chief of sinners. Forgive our iniquities and keep us from sin for Jesus' sake. Amen. I would like to begin tonight by reading the decisions that were taken regarding deposition. The decision that was taken first of all by First Reformed Protestant Church's consistory. Because this decision was distributed and was also read on Sunday, I don't intend to read all of the explanation of the grounds. The explanation of those grounds and the subparagaths of the grounds you can consult on your own in the copies that were distributed. The decision of the consistory was this, that the consistory of First Reformed Protestant Church deposed Mr. Chuck Dusama from the office of elder. Ground A: Mr. Dusama has contradicted the doctrine of the reformed confessions by his public teaching and writing, thus violating his formula of subscription vow. And then there is explanation of that ground that I will not read now. Ground B: Mr. Dusama has committed the gross sins of false doctrine and public chism and thus must be expelled from his office according to articles seventy-nine and eighty of the Church Order. And then there were explanations for that ground, which I will not read now. Then the second motion that was taken was that the consistory of First Reformed Protestant Church seek the sentence of Second Reformed Protestant Church regarding Mr. Chuck Dusama. Ground: Article seventy-nine of the Church Order requires that deposition take place, quote, "by preceding sentence of the consistory thereof and of the nearest church," end quote. Second RPC is the nearest church to First RPC. And then the decision that Second RPC took last night reads as follows. This is article twenty-seven of the May seventeen, two thousand twenty-two minutes of Second RPC. Motion carried to concur with the sentence of First Reformed Protestant Church with its grounds in the deposition of Chuck Dusama as elder. The meaning of those two decisions is that Mr. Chuck Dusama is now officially deposed from the office of elder in First Reformed Protestant Church and that Mr. Dusama no longer holds that office in our midst. I'd like to make a few comments in general about the decision to depose Mr. Dusama before we get into the essence of the matter and the heart of the matter. The first comment that I'd like to make is that Chuck's deposition was entirely for doctrinal reasons. That is all. The matter of Mr. Dusama's deposition was not a matter of procedure or a matter of not following this piece of order or that piece of order. It was entirely doctrinal. The decision was not even that Mr. Dusama communicated publicly with the congregation. The congregation. The issue is not that there was public communication with the congregation. The issue is not merely the fact that there was a public email sent out by Chuck on Saturday. Nor is the issue that Mr. Dusama disagreed with the consistory or that he disagreed with the classes. Mr. Dusama has disagreed with the consistory for several months and he was not deposed during that time as he wrote to the consistory and worked with the consistory and the consistory worked with him. The issue is not that he disagreed with the consistory or the classes. The issue is entirely and purely doctrinal. Mr. Dusama taught false doctrine and teaching false doctrine had to be deposed. The fact that this is doctrinal and purely doctrinal is evident from the decision of the consistory. The decision of the consistory is that Mr. Dusama, or rather that First Reformed Protestant Church deposed Mr. Chuck Dusama from the office of elder on the ground that he contradicted the doctrine of the reformed confessions by his public teaching and writing, thus violating his formula of subscription vow. Mr. Dusama himself indicated in his letter to the congregation on Saturday that the issue was doctrinal. In his letter, he writes, "I am compelled to distribute my contentions against the consistory in these vital matters." These vital matters are what Mr. Dusama opposed. And these vital matters are the doctrines that he had been writing about in his protests and that the consistory, or his letter in his protest, and that the consistory had been answering. Later in his letter, Mr. Dusama says, "Due to my contention that we have administered and continued to administer the sacrament of the Lord's Supper improperly, I will not be taking part in the administration of the sacrament or in partaking of the sacrament until this doctrinal dispute is settled properly in accordance with Scripture and the confessions." There he refers to this doctrinal dispute. So that from everyone's point of view, the matter was doctrinal. That's what the consistory dealt with, that's what Mr. Dusama was being dealt with. That perhaps will put to rest some of the concern that the consistory, whether that concern is from within or from without, that the consistory was hypocritical in deposing an office bearer. When we were deposed, or office bearers in the Protestant Reformed Churches were deposed, part of our contention is that the assemblies didn't follow proper order. In this case, the issue is entirely, entirely doctrinal. A second comment in general with regard to the decision to depose is that this decision is settled and this decision is binding. This decision is not settled merely because a consistory said so. It is not settled merely because a consistory took a decision. It is not settled merely because a classist said so or a classist took a decision. But it is settled by the word of God and it is binding by the word of God. The consistory's decision took hold of the scriptures and took hold of the confessions and applied those scriptures and confessions to the issues, the doctrinal issues that Mr. Dusama was raising with us. It is that word of God that settles the matter. And that also contributes to the nature of this meeting. This meeting is not to deliberate the decisions. This meeting is not to try to find out what the truth of the matter might be or might not be. This is an informational meeting in order to show what that decision was. The decision is settled according to the word of God. And then in the third place, a general comment with regard to the decision to depose. This is a joyful occasion for First Reformed Protestant Church. I do not say that with any insensitivity to the weightiness of it. It is a tremendously weighty decision. It is a decision that might even shake us as we first see it and as we wrap our minds around it. But this is a joyful occasion for the congregation. And the joy of this occasion is that the gospel triumphed. The gospel triumphed over a carnal view of the sacrament of our Lord and the gospel triumphed over legalism that would take away from you and from the members of the church that gospel. For years in our mother church, the gospel was not able to win the day. That is, the gospel always wins the day, but men would look to the reputation of men first before the gospel. In this case, when a carnal view of the Lord's Supper was taught to the congregation and when a legalistic view was bound on the souls of the congregation, the word of God and the gospel of Jesus Christ triumphed over that carnality and over that legalism. This is a glorious day. This is part of the deliverance that God gives to His church. In fact, we ought to have the attitude with regard to ourselves, to our own offices, to our own lives, to our everything. Let God be true and let every man be a liar. That's Romans three. And in this case, when a man is found to be a liar against the gospel, we rejoice with the confession, "Let God be true, let His truth go forth, let His gospel carry the day and let His gospel not be taken away from our midst." That brings us then to the doctrinal matters that make up the decision. The grounds of the decision were entirely doctrinal and there are two doctrinal matters that are closely related that were decided and that the word of God decided. The first is that the position of Mr. Dusama made the Lord's Supper into a carnal meal. It made the spiritual sacrament into a carnal meal. And that is the position that Mr. Dusama taught to the congregation in his email on Saturday. Mr. Dusama taught to the congregation all of the material that was in his protests and in his letters. And in those, that letter and those protests, there are, there is a position that the Lord's Supper is a carnal meal. Mr. Dusama also in his email on Saturday indicated that the whole matter that had just come to classes regarding a different appeal, another family's appeal to that classist, that he agreed with the doctrine of that appeal. He called it "these vital matters in that appeal" and that he contended against the consisteries and therefore against the classist's decision on those matters. Now again, the sin was not that he disagreed with a consistory or a classist, but the sin was that he taught, "I hold that false doctrine in that appeal. I hold that and I teach that to the congregation as the truth of the word of God." If anyone would like to see what the carnal view of the Lord's Supper is then, that was brought, one can study again the appeal that was brought to classes last week. In that appeal, there is a charge that the consistory of First RPC wrongly administered the Lord's Supper and that by it, it desecrated the Lord's Supper and that had several grounds. First RPC's consistory answered that from the word of God and that went to classes. That material has been distributed publicly, you can see what that decision was. I'd also like to show from the material that Mr. Dusama sent out Saturday that his position made the Lord's Supper into a carnal meal. That begins with the letter that he submitted to the consistory and that he then distributed to the congregation this past Saturday, which letter was dated January eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two. In that page and a half letter, Mr. Dusama refers again and again to the physical character of the Lord's Supper. Mr. Dusama made the Lord's Supper to depend on many physical arrangements, including the physical arrangement of the congregation in her building or buildings, the physical body of the minister, the physical nature, as he calls it, of assembling and the divided physical nature of the congregation in two buildings. He referred to an image or likeness of our ordained minister over the screen. He referred to the bodily presence of our minister during the administration of the sacrament. And this line especially, "the inherent physical nature of the sacrament as a visible sign and seal." And with that language, inherent physical nature, he gathers in, into one, all his contention about the physical body of the minister, the physical arrangement of the congregation. He maintains that the minister was not there bodily to distribute the elements or bodily present in the outbuilding to break the bread. And therefore the congregation could not partake of the Lord's Supper. And when it was administered out there, the supper was desecrated and the consistory sinned. If you take out that January eighteen letter and look through it, you will see the constant emphasis on the physical nature of the Lord's Supper. That makes the Lord's Supper into essentially a carnal meal. When the consistory answered Mr. Dusama in a February twelfth letter, the consistory warned Mr. Dusama that all these accommodations that have been made do not affect the essence of the supper. They do not concern the essence of the sacrament. Because the essence of the sacrament is not carnal, it is not a long calculation about bodies and buildings, but the essence of the sacrament is physical. The consistory also warned Mr. Dusama to beware towards an almost superstitious preoccupation with the physical aspects of the sacrament. In his protest against the consisteries administration of the Lord's Supper, which protest was given to the consistory on February eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two, Mr. Dusama continued the teaching that the sacrament is essentially carnal, essentially physical. Now, the language that he used was not first of all physical, whether physical body or building, but now the language is assembling and the language is "in the midst of." Mr. Dusama changed his language for the most part in that protest, but that language means the same thing as that original letter. And Mr. Dusama interpreted "in the midst of" to be physically in the midst of. And so strictly physically in the midst of that if there was not a presence of the minister within the same four walls, that what was happening in the worship was not preaching and the sacrament was not the sacrament. These are some lines from that protest. "Preaching in the outbuilding by means of live streaming renders that a word of exhortation." "Live streaming the preaching into the outbuilding is not lively preaching." There's, that sentence continues. Then later in the protest, "The assembling in the outbuilding for worship is nothing more than family worship, a live-streamed worship service notwithstanding," end quote. What's the reason for it being only family worship and not the lively preaching? Quote, "the absence of the minister in their midst." Mr. Dusama's position again was that the worship of the church now, in addition to the administration of the sacrament, is carnal. When the consistory answered Mr. Dusama, his protest, the consistory warned him again in the grounds that he focuses almost entirely on the physical, makes the assembly of God's people together depend on the location of the minister's physical body, feet, and voice, so that if the minister is on the same property but not the same building and if the members hear the preaching by electronic means and not the minister's natural voice, then they are not assembled together. The consistory had more to say on that, some of which was similar to what it said to the protest of a different family, but which applied to this case. Throughout, Mr. Dusama made the supper to be carnal, made it to be essentially physical. That doctrine of the Lord's Supper as a carnal meal will infect and already has begun to infect every other doctrine of Scripture. That doctrine of the Lord's Supper as a carnal meal must come to expression in the doctrine of God. And indeed, in the protest against a sermon in January, Mr. Dusama makes the carnal nature of the sacrament as he sees it to make God into a carnal being. That's the significance of this doctrine. In a passage in that protest, when Mr. Dusama is explaining why the covenant is physically proximate, he used that word proximate that he took out of a sermon, but by that word proximate, he means the same thing he has all along, that it is dependent on physical arrangements, arrangements, that it is dependent on being physically in the midst of, and therefore carnal. He described the truth this way, that it is rooted in the creation of man as male and female. And then later, in this way, man was created a physically social or covenantal creature in many respects like unto his covenantal creator. Man was created a physically social or covenantal creature in many respects like unto his covenantal creator. And remember, that's a description of Adam and Eve and their one flesh, physical union. I say that is an assault on the doctrine of God. That turns God into a carnal being. That doctrine must also work its way into the doctrine of the church. Here is the doctrine of the church in that protest of the January sermon. Quote, "Marriage and family are the basic building block of the locally autonomous congregation, families covenant to form local instituted congregations based on physical proximity," end quote. That is not the doctrine of the church. That is an attack on the doctrine of the church. The truth of the church, or the existence of the church, is not based in the basic building block of marriage and the family. And covenant families do not covenant together to form local instituted congregations based on physical proximity. The church is gathered of believers and their elect seed. The church is the assembling of the elect. And that is the confessional teaching regarding the church. The church is an assembly of believers who all are united to Christ by His Spirit. This is a carnal view of the church, and it has to be. This carnal view of the sacrament has to work its way even into the doctrine of the church. This also has to work its way into the doctrine of Jesus Christ and the doctrine of His union with His church. Quote, "As such, it also of necessity," that is the consistory's position or the sermon's position, "does violence to the truth of the covenantal union and communion God enjoys very proximately within Himself, and to the truth of the covenantal union and communion Christ enjoys very proximally within His church." And remember, proximally has meant physical. Proximately has meant in a local space. And now God enjoys that same fellowship proximally within Himself, and Jesus Christ enjoys covenant communion proximally with the church. That's a carnal view of the covenant, that's a carnal view of Christ and His relationship with the church. The whole teaching that was given to the congregation on Saturday is a carnal view, not only of the sacrament, but of God, of His Christ, of His covenant, and of His church. The truth regarding all of these things is that the Lord's Supper is spiritual. It is a spiritual meal. It is not a carnal meal. The fact that it has physical elements and the fact that it is administered in the assembling of the congregation does not make the Lord's Supper a carnal meal. And it does not make it a meal that is dependent for its efficacy upon the physically proximate location of the members. That the Lord's Supper is a spiritual meal is taught in the Bellet Confession, Article 35. It is taught in many other places. For the full, or at least more scriptural and confessional proof of this, you can refer to the consistory's answers to Mr. Dusama, as well as the consistory and the classist answer to the protest that came to classes. Article 35, the third paragraph of that article. "Christ, that He might represent unto us this spiritual and heavenly bread, hath instituted an earthly and visible bread as a sacrament of His body, and wine as a sacrament of His blood, to testify by them unto us, that as certainly as we receive and hold this sacrament in our hands, and eat and drink the same with our mouths, by which our life is afterwards nourished, we also do as certainly receive by faith, which is the hand and mouth of our soul, the true body and blood of Christ, our only Savior, in our souls, for the support of our spiritual life." The Lord's Supper, according to that one paragraph, as well as the rest of the Bellet Confession's instruction on the Lord's Supper, teaches that the supper is a spiritual meal. What you eat in the Lord's Supper is spiritual. You eat the body and blood of Jesus Christ Himself. The way you partake of the sacrament in the Lord's Supper is spiritual. It is by faith, which is the hand and mouth of the soul. Your communion with your fellow members in the partaking of the Lord's Supper is spiritual. It does not have to do with how far your shoulder is from the shoulder next to you, but it is by the Spirit, so that by the same Spirit who dwells in Christ and in us, we have communion together with Christ and together one with another. The Lord's Supper is not in any sense a carnal meal. The Lord's Supper is a thoroughly spiritual meal. That was the first doctrinal error, false doctrine, that Mr. Dusama taught on Saturday when he wrote to the congregation. The second false doctrine that Mr. Dusama fell into was legalism. That legalism is essentially this, the rules of man taking away Jesus Christ. The rules of man being imposed in the place of Jesus Christ. The rules of man binding the conscience of the believer, so that the believer may not have Christ, may not have His salvation, and may not have His peace and His comfort of the gospel, until those rules of man have been met. The doctrine of the carnal nature of the sacrament was legalism in Mr. Dusama's material. Mr. Dusama made a law for First Reformed Protestant Church. And his law for First Reformed Protestant Church is that you cannot have the sacrament, and that means you cannot have Christ, His body and blood. You can only defile the sacrament, and therefore defile His body and blood unless you are within the bounds of this room. And anyone who is outside the bounds of this room, that is, anyone who is not physically proximate to this room, anyone who is not physically proximate to the physical body of the minister, anyone who does not physically see with their eyes the bread broken and the wine poured out in this room, that person does not have the Lord's Supper. That person does not have Christ's body and blood. That person has defiled the Lord's Supper and defiled the body and blood of the Lord. That's legalism. That was the rule of man that took away from the congregation the body and blood of Christ. And it was the rule that took away that body and blood, not only for those outside of these walls, those who might be behind that glass, or those who might be in the basement or another room, or those who might be in the outbuilding, but it took away the sacrament from those in this room too. Because the congregation, by the sin of the consistory, had administered that Lord's Supper improperly according to the rule of Chuck Dusama. And administering the supper improperly according to the rule of Chuck Dusama makes it an invalid sacrament and a defiled sacrament. So that the congregation, unless it meets the rule of Chuck Dusama, has violated the supper. Now that's taking away from the congregation the body and blood of the Lord Jesus Christ. That matter of legalism is a cancer, or as the Lord says in Matthew 16, it is a lovin'. That matter of legalism lovens the church, it spreads in the church. The doctrine of the Lord's Supper is not the last rule that a legalist will legislate on. In fact, in the material that was sent out Saturday, there are other issues waiting in the wings for this legalist to make more laws about. What are those other issues? At least this many. First, the lively preaching of the gospel. Not only was the sacrament defiled for the whole congregation by its administration in the outbuilding, according to this rule, but the lively preaching of the gospel does not and may not go forth over the live stream. It may not go forth over the live stream to someone outside of this room who cannot physically see the minister. It does not go forth to the outbuilding. It does not go forth to any other group who may be assembled and watching that live stream. The preaching of the gospel is not lively preaching in those other places. Why not? Because a man says so. A man says that the Lord will not send that spirit and that word over the live stream. That affects, in the second place, the whole matter of worship, that what happens in the outbuilding is merely family worship. There's no assembling of those members with this congregation. There is no participation in the worship. They are watching other people worship, and in their watching, other people worship have only the equivalent of family worship. That's legalism. That takes away from those members Christ and His gospel, so that now they did not hear the lively preaching of the gospel according to this rule. And until the rules of this or that man are met, that everybody may assemble here, you do not have Christ in the preaching, you do not have His gospel, you have the equivalent only of family worship. Third, this legalism extends to the safety of the building. Mr. Dusama, in his documents, referred to the consistory being at fault for not providing a safe space for worship. And now, this will become a rule that hasn't been developed yet, but that is the next rule that's in the pocket, and the next rule that will be brought out. Unless you get the kind of building that I call for, and unless you get the kind of building that I determine is proper, then you are sinning, and you are keeping members of the congregation away from the Lord Jesus Christ. And fourth, the next issue that it will come to is the covenant education of our children. Now, Elder, or former Elder Dusama did not specify what he meant by covenant education, but in his last communication to the consistory, he indicated that this whole matter affects the covenant education of our children. Well, that matter has come up in the school in the past year with regard to live streaming outside of the four walls of the school. One wonders whether that's what was meant. That would have to be developed yet, but that's waiting in the wings. And that means that with legalism, the solution to that legalism where a man makes a rule and says, here is my rule that you have to follow before you can have Christ, the solution is not to pacify the man. The rule, the way to solve that is not to give in to the man. It seems like that's the way to solve it. What's the big deal about not having Lord's Supper in the outbuilding? Why couldn't we just stop that? And make this problem go away? Because there are 15 more rules and laws, and I don't even know what they are yet. Perhaps the legalists don't even know what they are yet, but there are 15 more, and then 150 more rules and laws that you must meet before you may have Christ, before you may have His gospel, and you may have His salvation. The effect of this legalism is to trouble the church. That's the word that Paul uses in Galatians. I would that they were cut off, that trouble you. That troubling of the Judaizers is that the consciences of God's people are bound, so that they don't have the joy of their salvation, they're not quite sure whether they have their Christ and all His gifts, because that man has told them that they don't, and that they're defiling something of Christ. That's the trouble. It's the binding of the conscience under the law of man. And that binding is happening. That trouble is happening in the congregation and in the denomination through this legalistic approach to the Lord's Supper. So that men and women begin to wonder, are we really desecrating the table? When we come together Sunday morning and we have the Lord's Supper, and it's administered here and in the outbuilding, and that's one administration of the Lord's Supper, have we defiled Christ by not having some kind of physical proximate room we can meet in? And then you eat and you drink, and you wonder, what am I doing to the body and blood of Christ? Or members wonder, what do we have in the preaching of the gospel when we live stream that? Do we really have Christ? Or what about when the hands are raised and the blessing is pronounced to the congregation, and you see that over the live stream? Is that really the blessing of Christ to you? Or is that only watching other people receive the blessing of Christ? And now you come to church, and you hear the sermon, and you see the blessing, and you have the sacrament, and in all of that, your conscience is troubled. What if we're defiling Christ? What if we don't have Him? That's legalism. It troubles the church by binding the conscience and taking away Christ and His gospel from the church. The reality of the Lord's Supper and the rules regarding the Lord's Supper is that the Lord's Supper is a simple spiritual meal. And the preaching of the gospel is simple and spiritual. The Lord's Supper is not complicated. And Christ did not give a long list of rules that had to be met before the Lord's Supper counts, or before it's the real celebration of the Lord's Supper. And Christ made a very simple sacrament that His church could celebrate and administer in any circumstance in the New Testament. In the catacombs, they could administer the Lord's Supper. In the time of persecution at the Reformation, when only a third of the congregation or less could gather, on a certain night, they could administer the Lord's Supper. In the days of persecution at the end, the church can administer the Lord's Supper. When the church overflows its sanctuary and sets up a room in the basement or outside to accommodate the members, she can celebrate the Lord's Supper. It is a simple meal, and the consciences of God's people must not be bound with these carnal rules of man that take away the supper from the church. Again, the fact that it is a simple meal is Article 35, and the fact that this may not be taken away from you by the rule of man is Article 32 of the Bellet Confession. "We reject all human inventions and all laws which man would introduce into the worship of God, thereby to bind and compel the conscience in any manner whatever. Therefore we admit only of that which tends to nourish and preserve concord and unity, and that's concord and unity in Christ and in His gospel, and to keep all men in obedience to God." That's the truth regarding worship. Don't be troubled by legalism. Don't listen to the rules of man that are meant to bind your conscience. You cast those off and stand fast in the liberty where with Christ hath made you free. Therefore, with those doctrinal errors, the sin that Mr. Dusama was guilty of was in the first place, the sin of false doctrine. The sin of false doctrine is to continue in doctrines which are contrary to the word of God. Mr. Dusama has continued in doctrines contrary to the Word of God and has taught the congregation those doctrines contrary to the Word of God. That's the sin of false doctrine. The second sin is the sin of public sism. That sin of public sism is not this, that you teach something and there's a division in the congregation. When you teach the gospel, there will be a division in the congregation. But the sin of public sism is this, that a man divides the congregation away from Christ. Whether anyone follows him or not, whether anyone believes a word he says or not, when a man divides the congregation from Christ and from His truth and from His gospel, that's sism. And by this false doctrine, then then Elder Dusama became guilty of those two sins which require his deposition. The battle for first-reformed Protestant church is going to be on two fronts. The battle for the church is going to be on the front of the doctrine, the doctrinal issues, the false doctrine of a carnal worship and a carnal sacrament, and the false doctrine of legalism. Those things must be exposed, they must be condemned. And the truth of the spiritual, simple supper of the Lord by which you have the body and blood of Jesus Christ by faith must be taught. That's one battlefront which we have just gone through. The second battlefront is going to be our own selves and our own view of that false doctrine. What I mean by that is the battle for us is what are we going to do with that false teaching? What are we going to do with that error? And I know my flesh and I know yours. And our flesh wants to make it all go away. We don't like the unrest that we see superficially over all of this. We don't like the shock that we experience at the deposition of an office bearer. And your carnal flesh and mine will be tempted to make this all go away by minimizing it. And by making it seem as if this is not that big a deal. Or as if this is an open question that the Word of God is not clear on and that remains a matter of debate in the congregation. That will be our temptation. The temptation then will be this, that we do not go as far as Jesus and the apostles do in the condemnation of this false doctrine. Jesus says that this false doctrine is the lovin' of the Pharisees. That's what the Pharisees lovin' was, it was legalism. And by that legalism, the Pharisees taught a host of the laws of man that took away Christ and His truth from the people. That is how we are to view this legalism. It is the lovin' of the Pharisees. And what does lovin' do? It works through. It works through the whole lump. It works through this whole congregation. It works through the denomination. Lovin' works through. It fizzes and fizzes and fizzes away into the bread, into the lump of the congregation and denomination. And therefore beware of the lovin' of the Pharisees. Beware of that pharisaical Judaizing doctrine that would make worship carnal and that would take Christ away from you until the law of this and that man are met. And then the Apostle Paul explains how this all happens. And that too is how far we must go in following our Lord. The Apostle explains that this legalism comes into the church due to false brethren. They looked like brethren. They sounded like brethren. They acted like brethren. They lived with you as brethren. They are not brethren. They are false brethren. That's what legalism is. That's what those who teach legalism are, false brethren. How does it happen that they come to teach and insist on this legalism? This way, they come in privily to spy out our liberty which we have in Christ Jesus. What they are against is liberty. What they are against is the liberty we have in Christ. The thinking goes this way. I'm pretty sure I'm not carnal and profane or careless and profane, but I'm pretty sure you are. And I have a rule that will keep you safe. You don't know how to follow that rule, but I'll teach you that rule to keep you safe. And that means you're going to have to give up your liberty in Christ to do that thing which is lawful. You're going to follow my rule and then you'll be safe. They come to spy out the liberty that we have in Christ that they might bring us into bondage. And that's real bondage. That's the bondage of man, the will of man and the whim of man. Once this rule works its way out, then the next rule will come. But what you must be under is bondage and not the liberty that you have in Jesus Christ. And if the church gives in to this legalism, even for the space of an hour, Paul's way of saying, even for a moment. If the church gives in to that legalism, the church will lose the gospel. She will not have the gospel. And Paul says, when we did not circumcise Titus, which in itself was no big deal. Timothy was circumcised. Titus could be circumcised. But when it became the rule of man, you must, you are compelled to do this, or you do not have Christ. When Titus was compelled to be circumcised, we didn't let him be compelled. Why? That the truth of the gospel might continue with you. The truth of the gospel is what's at stake here. That's the significance of this matter. And that's also why this is a glorious event. It is a glorious event. It is waiting. We all feel that. But this is a glorious event. This is a relief that the gospel of the Lord Jesus Christ has made us free in Him, to have Him in His supper Sunday morning. That the gospel has made us free to have His body and His blood, to have His righteousness, to have all His things, to have heaven itself in Him, to have God in Him. The gospel has made us free to have all of these things. And when there was an attempt to spy out our liberty and take it away, the gospel said to them, no, no, you mayn't have that. That belongs to Christ. That belongs to us. We're going to stand in that liberty. That's a glorious thing for the church of Jesus Christ. And that can lift whatever burden there is from our shoulders regarding the whole matter of the weight of it. The gospel of the Lord Jesus Christ is more precious than anything. It's more precious than your name or mine, than your office or mine. And therefore, as we stand fast in that liberty, let this be our confession, let God be true and His gospel be true. And let every man be a liar if that's what it takes. Stand fast in the liberty where with Christ hath made you free. I thank you for your time. At this point, we'll pass out some note cards. If anyone has some questions, we'll take about, let's say, a fifteen-minute break and be back here at quarter to eight. At seven forty-five, we'll return. Or did I not? That's eight forty-five, sorry. I'm on Iowa time.
Together in the next minute or so. All right, thank you to those who wrote out some questions. My intention with these questions is not to debate the decision of the consistory, and it is not to deal with hypotheticals and a whole range of possibilities. So if your question is not answered in this time, that would be the reason why. First, when you speak of false brethren come in to spy out our liberty, I hope that you are saying this with the intention to include ourselves, or all of us, in this camp, or under this designation at one point of our life or another, such that we must all confess that in our sins, we must view ourselves as false brethren, false brethren who must repent and who are redeemed from this sin as well of being a false brethren, who spies out the liberty of our brethren. No, that is not what I mean. I mean that there is a very specific individual in the church that is a false brethren, a false brother. It's possible that any of us be a false brother at a certain time in our life. If that's the question, then sure, anybody could be a false brother. It's possible that any of us could fall into legalism. But the question is not an abstract, is it possible that we commit this sin, and even are there times that we might be guilty of this sin? But when I refer to a false brother, I mean one who came into the church under false pretenses to take away the liberty of the church. Now, that false brother himself in his own mind might not even know that that's what he was doing. He thought he was a true brother. But he came in to take away the liberty that we have in Christ, and he does that by his Judaizing laws, his laws of man that take away Christ from the people. Now, a false brother can repent, a false brother can be converted. So the designation of someone as a false brother does not mean they are now and forever a false brother. But what the intention in the speech was to explain, as it was for Paul, was to explain how does it happen that Judaizers arise in the church, and how does it happen that they trouble a congregation or a denomination? And the answer is there are specific men, these Judaizers, who are false brethren, who creep in unawares to spy out your liberty you have in Christ. It's a warning. It's not merely a warning, we could be guilty of this, but it's a warning when that false brother reveals himself, don't heed his levelling, don't listen to his levelling. Second, can a physical act of man or a circumstance of man's arrangement affect a spiritual reality or benefit? I have a hard time understanding even that question, a physical act of man creating a spiritual reality or benefit? Again, I'm not sure what angle the question is cut. Our spiritual salvation. The salvation of God's people is by grace through faith in Jesus Christ, and that's entirely spiritual. So if this question is meant to help underscore the fact that nothing about salvation and the gospel and the sacraments is carnal, even though there might be some physical elements, that nothing about it is carnal, that that question might help answer that. Then do the means of preaching or the means of the sacrament precede in some vital sense the work of the Spirit in building and/or confirming faith in the elect? Again, I think that question is intended to help explain how the gospel works, but I wouldn't put it in the terms of in some vital sense precedes. Our salvation is by the gospel of the Lord Jesus Christ, including the gospel that's in those sacraments. Our faith is created by the Spirit through the preaching of the Word, and it is confirmed by the administration of the sacraments. And I am not interested in putting it in terms of how this comes first or second. Our salvation is by the means of grace. If the supper is simply a spiritual meal and not bound by physical elements, why don't cornerstone and sovereign partake when the sacrament is administered at FRPC? To my mind, this is crossing into a hypothetical. The answer why they don't right now is that they simply haven't decided to do it that way. Whether it would be sinful or wrong simply hasn't been faced. Our contention as a consistory was with the charge that was made against our administration of the sacrament in the alt building. If the physical aspect of assembly or communion isn't what makes us an assembly, what then is the importance of the local congregation? The Spirit of Jesus Christ draws us to Christ where He is, and the Lord Jesus Christ is found in this local congregation in the preaching of the gospel, the administration of the sacraments, and the Spirit of the Lord Jesus Christ is in us as fellow believers. The Spirit of Christ draws us to each other as far as God makes that possible for us in the circumstances of our lives. For some, that means He draws us into a certain room. For others, who might get sick in a certain room, He draws us as far as we can come wherever else accommodations have been made. The fact that the assembly or the communion of the assembly is spiritual does not take away the assembling of that assembly. Is physical proximity ever a command? Is it only a fruit, a godly desire of our union with Christ? The problem with physical proximity at this point with that term is that that term has been used to teach a carnal view of the sacrament, a carnal view of worship. That term, physical proximity, is pretty tainted by now. God calls us to assemble. Now, God doesn't give us pages and pages of rules about what constitutes assembling. He calls us to assemble together as a congregation. When there are circumstances that He Himself gives that need to be accommodated, we can make those accommodations. So there is a command to assemble, but I don't want to put that in the terms of physical proximity. The Church of the Lord Jesus Christ is called to assemble together, and that is also a fruit of the gospel, so that the congregation loves to come together in the worship of her Lord. Proper worship of the Lord is essential and of great importance to the believer. How does one determine whether what they are doing is not like the worship of Nadab and Abihu who offered strange fire to Jehovah and of Uzzah who was slain when he touched the ark of God improperly? How do we know what is the levelling of legalism and what is the true and proper worship of Jehovah? God has told us in His Word what His worship is to be and what His worship is to look like. Article thirty-two of the Belge confession answers that question best with regard to, well, how do we make this look? "In the meantime, we believe, though it is useful and beneficial that those who are rulers of the church institute and establish certain ordinances among themselves for maintaining the body of the church, yet they ought studiously to take care that they do not depart from those things which Christ, our only Master, hath instituted; and therefore we reject all human inventions and all laws which man would introduce into the worship of God, thereby to bind and compel the conscience in any manner whatever. Therefore we admit only of that which tends to nourish and preserve concord and unity and to keep all men in obedience to God. For this purpose excommunication or church discipline is requisite with the several circumstances belonging to it according to the word of God." We need to make certain arrangements. We need to know what time we're going to begin worship. That doesn't mean that that's a rule that binds and compels the conscience. We need to have a certain order of worship. It could be this order of worship, it could be that order of worship, but we need to know when we're going to be singing and need to know when we're going to be praying. So all of those things are useful and beneficial for maintaining the body of the church, maintaining the body of the church in the gospel of Jesus Christ. But we must take care that we do not depart from those things which Christ, our only Master, hath instituted. In other words, we don't say, well, this Sunday we're not going to have a sermon, or next Sunday we're not going to sing the Psalms. Those elements of worship that God has given in His Word, we do not depart from. That's not a law of man that by which we get our salvation. It's not even a law of God by which we get our salvation, but it is the rule of God for the thankful life of the church. And as we depart not from those things which Christ hath instituted, we also reject all human inventions and all laws which man would introduce into the worship of God, thereby to bind and compel the conscience in any manner whatever. When the church says there's a sermon, there's the sacrament, and the assembling of the congregation, or when a man rises to say, but you do not have Christ in that sermon and sacrament until you follow my law, then that is binding and compelling the conscience. That's the legalism. It's not finding the right list of laws. It's a matter of not binding and compelling the conscience with the laws of man. "When Christ instituted the Lord's Supper with His disciples, there was bread, wine, the disciples in Christ. The minister now is a picture of Christ. Is it okay to exclude any of these ever?" The minister is not, first of all, a picture of Christ. It's the sacrament that's the picture of Christ. It's the bread and the wine. That's the sign of His broken body and shed blood. The minister is God's servant to administer the sacrament. When Christ instituted the supper, there were other circumstances. They were in an upper room. There were some ceremonies that preceded it, a foot washing, some other aspects. There was the singing of a specific psalm at the conclusion of the Lord's Supper. But that doesn't mean that every single one of those circumstances needs to be present. The essence of the Lord's Supper is the broken bread and the poured-out wine by which Christ feeds His people with the body and blood of the Lord Jesus Christ by faith. And then whatever the church needs in accommodating her circumstances, she may follow, as long as that does not conflict with the word of God. But if the church needs to administer the sacrament with rye bread instead of wheat bread, and then whatever else, and I don't want to get into all kinds of hypotheticals, but the church may celebrate that simple supper of the Lord. All right, thank you for your questions again. That's all that I have that I'm going to answer tonight. Let's close with a word of prayer. Our Father which art in heaven, we thank Thee for Jesus Christ. We thank Thee for His body and blood. We thank Thee for His liberty. We thank Thee for His gospel. We thank Thee for our salvation. We thank Thee for the victory of the gospel and for the truth that shines brilliantly and brightly over against the lie. We confess, Father, before Thee, our own weakness. Will Thou forgive all our sins, comfort us with our Savior, with His body and blood, with His life and His death and His resurrection. We pray, Father, that Thy word and Thy gospel may not depart from us, but that Thou wilt preserve it, not for our sakes, but for Jesus' sake, in whose name we pray. Amen.